That's up.
Should that be on there?
Okay, seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how we will proceed with the hearing. But first, I have to give you a notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to the board. At my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bezakowski, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, and Steve Duba. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you were at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is an appeal for a variance from the terms of zoning by law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Timothy S. Battles, CTV Holdings LLC, of 47 Hawthorne Village Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. The undersigned petition is as follows. The applicant is seeking a variance to vary the requirement of Section 250-6.4(c)(2D), which states that the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway shall be 12% and 16% is proposed. The proposed action has begun. The basis for this variance, petition for variance, concerns the following section of the Lunenburg zoning by law, 250-6.4(c)(2D). The street address is 321 Sunny Hill Road, MAP 79, parcel 57. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is CTV Holdings LLC of 33 Lomar Park, Unit 3, in Pepperell, Mass. 01463. And the deed is recording, recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 9985, Page 237, and recorded May 21, 2021. There is, attached is a letter. Dear Zoning Board members, please find attached an application for a variance from Section 250-6.4(c)(2D) of the Lunenburg Protective Zoning Bylaws. That section of the bylaw requires that the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway be 12%. The private driveway at 321 Sunny Hill Road, which will serve the newly constructed single-family home, has been construction, has been constructed and paved. It was brought to the attention of the owners by the DPW director that the driveway was constructed at approximately a 16% slope, 4% higher than allowed per the bylaw. As a requirement of a variance application, a statement to the four variance criteria is included below. Number one, circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape of topography, or land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally the zoning district in which it is located, in which it is located area. The response, the existing site is very steep with an elevation change of approximately 100 feet of elevation change from the front site to the rear property line. The entirety of the property contains slopes at approximately two to one slope. Constructing the proposed driveway at 12% would require the removal of the existing driveway, regrading the subbase material, and the installation of new pavement. The proposed replacement and regrading would require disturbance of the stabilized site and the import of additional fill to establish the breakout grading for the driveway. Two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the Lunenburg zoning by law would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the undersigned for the following reasons. The reply, as mentioned above, the regrading of the driveway would require the material, require the removal of the installed pavement and the installation of new subbase material and pavement within the driveway footprint. This would cause substantial hardship for the owners of the property, as they would be required to pay for the driveway paving a second time. Three, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. The reply, the proposed variance can be granted without causing substantial detriment to any abutting property owners nor any further future owners of the subject property. The driveway has been constructed with a wooden guardrail along the low side of the driveway and contains a level landing area prior to entering the garage. The proposed driveway is relatively short, as approximately 150 feet, and does not contain any long, straight stretches of pavement graded at 16%. Number four, the variance desired may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the Lunenburg zoning by law. The purpose of the zoning by law is broken out into subsections below. A, to lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to conserve safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, to promote adequate light and air. B, to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels. C, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements. D, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including conservation of natural resources and the prevention of blight and pollution of the environment. E, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, including consideration of recommendations for the master plan adopted by the planning board and the comprehensive plan of the regional planning commission, agency. F, to preserve and increase amenities by the promulgation of regulations to fulfill said objectives. The proposed project involves a single-family home constructed on a residentially zoned property. The proposed project will not have any adverse effects on the abutting properties nor on any vehicular or pedestrian traffic within Sunny Hill Road. The proposed project will not derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning by law. And that is signed January 2, 2024, by Timothy S. Battles of CTV Holdings LLC. There is a copy of the deed attached. There is a copy of the field card, a site plan, a copy of the list of abutters who were notified two weeks prior to this hearing, and there is a letter from the building commissioner. Would you like me to read it, or he is here, so?
He is here. Would you like us to read it, or would you like to address it? Yes.
Got any questions up here?
Okay.
Okay. And this is to the town of Lunenburg dated February 8 regarding the driveway at 321 Sunny Hill Road. As building commissioner, I have reviewed the application for zoning relief regarding the driveway that has been constructed at 321 Sunny Hill Road. Below, I have compiled a timeline of the events leading to this application being filed so that the board may have a full understanding of the circumstances leading to the request for relief. A permit application for the driveway was applied on December 20, 2021, with Michael Blanchflower as the applicant. December 20, 2021, the DPW asked for grades to be shown on the plans. April 12, 2021, 22, the permit, the building permit for the construction of the single-family home was applied with Michael Blanchflower as the applicant. The permit was reviewed and approved on April 20, 2022, with the building permit being issued on April 27, 2022. April 20, 2022, the applicant was asked again, this time by the building commissioner, to provide the grades on the plans for the driveway permit. February 15, 2023, the DPW again asked for grades to be shown on the plans. November 6, 2023, a final inspection was conducted at the location. The driveway had been installed without a permit. November 7, 2023, the DPW director visited the site and found that driveway grades at various locations were 8.7%, 14.6%, 15.9%, 16.6%, 18%, and 15.3%. Most of which were in excess of the maximum 12% grade specified in the bylaw. The applicant was notified of these findings. November 20, 27, 2023, the applicant submitted a revised plan for their intention to comply with the bylaw, and the driveway permit was issued. And attached are all the various departments that commented on the building, on the driveway permit and building permit. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd invite the applicant off as rapid.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy, and I am representing the applicant this evening. CTV Holding Companies, Tim Battles, is with us this evening. And I appreciate, as always, the reading of the application into the record. I didn't want to really belabor this too long, but I wanted to provide a little bit of additional detail, if I could, relative to what we're requesting, and maybe just put a little plain-faced discussion on this. As was read into the record, the driveway is constructed. The driveway, in spite of the fact that the applicant for building permit apparently had some issues with the driveway permit process, the driveway was shown and graded on the septic plan that was prepared back in 2021. So it was, it has been graded since that time. We did provide, there has been an engineered plan, stamped engineered plan with that driveway shown on it. It was shown at the time at 12% to be constructed. And when we came, fast forward now until last fall, 2023, the applicant, Mr. Battles, applied for a certificate of occupancy on the building because the, the structure had been completed, site restored, septic system installed, and the like. And, and then, and so the issues relative to the driveway came to a head at that point. And so we immediately took some steps to see what we could do to correct the problem. It was late in the construction season at that time. It was in November, I believe, at that time, and it was just, it was, it was, we're banging up on, on the bad, on the bad weather. And so we made the decision to come before you this evening for a variance. And the reason we dared to do that is really for a couple of different reasons. One is, the first and foremost reason is really because the driveway is installed, it's freshly paved, it's in very good condition, all the side slopes have been restored, the riprap, which I can't point because I don't have a laser pointer, but the riprap on the inside of the driveway, and the driveway I'm referring to is on the lower portion of the screen. I have two lots shown on this plan, but the lot in question is 321, which is on the lower portion of the screen. As was stated in the application, the guardrail has been installed on the lower side, the slopes on the lower side have all been, all been installed. And so, you know, removal and replacement of the driveway would really create quite a bit of disturbance on the site, on an otherwise already stabilized site. Second, we're not talking about a uniform issue here. As, as was mentioned in the building commissioner's comments, the DPW director went on site and took some grades with a smart level. So he used a smart level on various portions of the driveway, and you could, and he reported what the, what the slopes were to you. So it's a continuum between 8% and he, I think he found the maximum one at 18. We didn't see that when we, when we did our ASBIL survey. So there's really a section in the middle. The entrance approach, when you come off of Sunny Hill Road, is, complies with the 12%, as well as the landing area at the base, the big flat area in front of the garage. It's really the about 75-feet section in the middle that exceeds the 12%. So we're not talking about the whole uniform driveway here at, at 150 feet. It's really just the, the middle section that is problematic relative to your bylaw. And, and I guess the only other thing I wanted to say, and it, we touched on it, or it was touched on in the, in the initial, in the initial narrative, was, was really the characteristics of the site. The, the site is, I'm quite certain most of you are knowledgeable, the site is very steep. The placement of the house on the site was really driven by not only topography but soils on the property. We actually, you can see, the owner owns the, the property to the north, so on the, on the top side of the screen as well. And you can see that the, that the house on that, on that piece of property is pushed further up towards the street, which really allows for a different configuration of the driveway in that case. We did extensive soil testing on this, on this lot prior to designing the, the septic system to try to find an alternative location for the septic system, which is between the house and the street. We did not find any other suitable soil further down the slope for the construction of the septic system that would, that would comply with total five requirements, which is why the septic system was put where it is, which effectively pushed the house further down the slope, which made the driveway a little more difficult to, to design and install. So really, it's, it's, we're here because there's an installed driveway that's over 12%. We're not trying to sugarcoat that. That's, that's the case. But really, I, we believe that instances owing to, directly owing to the topography and the soils directly contribute to the, to the difficulty of the driveway grading on the site. I did want to mention, and I'll stop with that, I'm sure you folks have questions. I did want to mention to you folks that we do have a pending application before the planning board as well, at the same time as the request for the certificate of occupancy. The, it was determined that we needed to go and get a stormwater permit from planning board, which was not done at the time of the initial building permit. So we are also in process with them. They've opened that hearing process, and we've, we will be back before them, I think, in another week or two. So I will leave it at that, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. You mentioned that the stormwater runoff, and you're going to have to go back to them. How would that affect this property? I know that there's a lot of issues with stormwater.
Yeah.
On that Sunny Hill.
Yeah. Yeah. So actually, we do have some stormwater occurrences adjacent to the driveway. It's really difficult to see. I don't know if you have your plan in front of you, but on the inside of that curve, we have established some riprap in there. That's in part to take, to take care of some of the grading, but also to mitigate some, some runoff and drainage. But the primary thing that we're adding to the plan relative to the planning board filing is actually down at the toe of the slope, so it's not really associated with the driveway per se. We're adding some swales and some rain gardens down at the toe of the slope, which will effectively collect all the runoff off of the driveway areas and the, and the buildings. And the reason why I have this plan in front of you with both lots is because we applied for both lots with the planning board, and I think we used the same plan to file with your board, so I just, I wanted to be clear there. So we're really, we're capturing all the runoff from the disturbed portions of the site and the new impervious area on both the existing house and, on the proposed house and driveway with the rain gardens that we're showing down at the, on the right-hand side of the, of the page. If that answers your question.
Okay. The next question I would have is, is if, hearing the timeline from the building commissioner going through all of this, I think they had to know that this was, this grading was off. And why would they continue to put all the base and tire of their driveway and put up the rail without talking to the building commissioner or somebody or the DPW to figure out?
I don't have an-
What they should be doing?
I don't have an answer to that personally, as, as the representative. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in on that, but I don't, personally wasn't part of the process there during the construction process. I know we did stake the driveway. We staked it per the plan, so I'm just not exactly sure what happened as part of the construction. So I, I did want to say that, that in my experience with the applicant that's sitting behind me, he hired us to do a job, which we did. He hired us to stake, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't, sometimes we design plans and then we don't get called back until the ASBIL phase to come back and do a, do an ASBIL survey. That wasn't the case here. We did stake the driveway. It's just that when we came back to do the ASBIL plan, it wasn't, it wasn't as, as we showed on the plan. So, and you know, I, I don't want to sit here and speculate the reasons for that, but I don't have the exact chap, you know, reasons for why that is, but the fact of the matter is that's the way it, that's the way it occurred.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up now to the rest of the board. Do they have any questions?
If you said that on the plan, everything was listed as a 12% grade, I know there was a ton of fill, as I live in the area. What changed so there's a steeper drop?
I think that there's a more of a level area that ended up with the base. So the area out, you know, the, the landing pad, if you will, you know, adjacent to the garage doors is, is larger than I think we had planned it. So it, it just went, it just, it was supposed to go a little shallower with a little less of a landing area there, and it went steeper with more of a landing area. I think that's what ended up happening.
Has this been checked out with the fire, police, and other ambulatory services? Because, you know, that's very important.
Yeah. I know it's been sent, right?
It was sent.
Application was sent. Do we have any comments or anything from them, Lisa?
Lisa, we sent out to all the other boards.
Yes.
Did we get any comments from any other board?
No.
No, okay.
I, I understand that sentiment. I, I also, and, and I understand what your bylaw says, and it says 12%. I, I'm not trying to, but I will say that, you know, a short section of 16%, it's not, it's not unnegotiable, you know, for those types, types of vehicles.
How short is short?
It's about 75 feet that's over the 12%. So it's the, you come into the driveway in the initial-
From here to that wall?
Yeah.
Which is about half the driveway?
About half the driveway, yeah. That's correct.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the board?
I have one question, and I might be between the two of you for my question, just procedurally. Where you said that the initial plan was 12, and I mean, just looking at that, I live pretty close to that area, so I know that that's, I'm sure you knew you were going to be right up against that number of 12%. But by moving that landing, I'm assuming you're talking about like right in front of the garage?
Yeah.
Does that typically, is that something that usually comes up like as, as you're doing it? Is it just like a, there's not enough room here as we're building it? Or is that something that like has to be?
Yeah, I mean-
Go back to the drawing board for something like that?
From my standpoint, and, and you know, Brian could speak to this and, you know, for his expertise, but at my standpoint, we typically, on, on projects like this, it's not, we usually don't give it the level of, of effort like we would on a subdivision road, for, for say, for example, where, you know, it's real important that we get that thing, whatever the design grade is. Usually driveways are not staked and graded. Usually the contractor just builds it per the plan, and it's, and we just go on our, on our own very way. You know, this, this site is a little unique, and then it's so steep, and we're banging up against a, you know, a maximum, a maximum grade requirement. So that's why this applicant that's behind you, you know, paid us to go out there and stake it, which is not something typically that we would do on a, on a project this size. Typically, we would be up there staking the building so that we could satisfy the building commissioner and do a, do a building permit plan, stake the building, come back, do an ASBIL location of the foundation, and we would also do staking of the septic system because that's another critical component, but not often on the driveway. So, you know, a lot of times that's, a lot of times those things on projects this size are just sort of adjusted in the field. You know, in this case, unfortunately, it was adjusted to a point that was, that brought it out of compliance with the, with the bylaw. But I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, yeah. And to follow that up, just in, I guess your professional opinion, is that space, that more level-ish space, is that more important to obviously be right in front of the structure?
It certainly makes it a lot more palatable. I mean, so I've been to the site now several times since it was, since it's been paved, and when you drive down it, yeah, it's steep, but you don't get the, the sense that you're, you know, you're, you're in jeopardy there. And the landing area really does make it, you know, fairly usable down at the bottom. So I mean, I really do think that from a, just take the bylaws issue out of it, I think that the way the driveway is graded now makes sense on the lot. I think it, it, it's a steep section down there, but then you have a nice generous level area there where you can, you know, park vehicles. If you had to get emergency vehicles, it's a nice area where they can, where they can go and park down, down at the bottom. So, you know, and I don't know if you have to be a civil engineer to, I mean, if you went out and saw it, I think you'd see the same thing. It's, it does seem to work well on the site the way it is built. Again, I'm not trying to gloss over your bylaw, but I'm just saying, if you just look at it, you know, apart from that lens, I think it, it does make sense.
I asked because I, I went by it today, and it's pretty icy.
Well-
Right at the bottom of that hill, so I was thinking-
Yeah. It's also not occupied, so I'm not sure we've been doing the same level.
No, no, yeah, no, I get that. Somebody would obviously be taking care of that, but.
I think there is a buyer for the, for the property, but I think it's not occupied yet.
Got you, okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Chairman, I have a question. I'd just like to reread this state, this letter, the statement from the building commissioner. November 26, 2023, a final inspection was conducted at the location. The driveway had been installed without a permit. Without a permit. That says a lot to me.
Come on, man.
Thank you.
It seems to me that there were repeated requests for the grades to be provided, which were apparently just ignored.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the story is with that process.
And my question really is, you say on November 27, 2023, the applicant submitted a revised plan showing their intention to comply. What, what were they, what does that plan say that they're going to do to comply with the bylaw?
Well, that would be what we refer to. We, we would, we would need to rip the driveway out and redo it. You know, that, that's our, that's our alternative here.
And there's been no certificate of occupancy issued yet, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And it's not been sold? The house has not been sold?
It has not been sold because of the certificate of occupancy. In my understanding, there is a buyer, though, in play, so.
Because, you know, a variance is basically a permit to break the law. So it's, in my mind, it's a pretty serious thing, so.
Hi, I'm Tim Battles from CTV Holdings. I think it might help to give you a little background on this whole thing as well. When I look at this whole situation, I think there's a big issue of lack of communication. The person, the company that we had do the excavation to, for the driveway, was the same one who put in the septic system, and I did have lots of problems with that person. But they did the grading. I believe my contractor at the time thought he had followed the, the plan as laid out, and so went forward and did the, the paving and everything like that. I myself was unaware of any questions going back and forth between the DPW and my contractor. I was totally unaware of that, so I think if I had, based upon, Greg can probably back me up on this, as soon as I found out all these issues going on, I was trying to do everything I could to make it right, which is why we put through the, the other plan to, if I had to, I would, you know, rip the driveway up. Given the circumstances, I've, I've already lost two buyers because of the process. I do have another one on, you know, that's hoping to close fairly shortly. But given where the weather was and, and whatnot, I thought I would try and go through this process and get the variance and see if we can make that work. this process and get the variance and see if we can make that work, just so I could, you know, we could move forward on this whole thing. You know, I have to take responsibility for, it's, you know, it's my, my property, my house, so I am taking responsibility for it and will accept what you, you know, how you vote. But, you know, I was unfortunately left in the dark on some of these back and forths that, that did occur. And it wasn't until Brian had informed me of this back in November that there were questions, there had been questions and things like that on the, the original driveway. So, it's not a question, this really isn't a case from my perspective of saying, you know, forget the bylaws, forget, you know, what we're supposed to follow. This, this happened without my, my knowledge as far as the, the grading and whatnot. So, I'm kind of out here, kind of putting myself on the mercy of you guys to try and, you know, as long as everybody is okay and thinks it's, it's safe as it is to be able to move forward and, you know, go forward. I'm already, I hired Greg to put in the, for the storm water drainage plan. That was a case of didn't even know we had to have one, and it wasn't even brought to my attention until when Brian went out for the final inspection. And that wasn't brought to my contractor's attention or anybody's attention at that point. And from what I understand, we probably shouldn't have even gotten a building permit without having to have that stormwater in place. So, two surprises for me when I thought things were, you know, pretty much done. But I'm here to do whatever it's going to take to, to make it right. I'm just hoping to get some cooperation and some mercy from you guys in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Brian, the building commissioner is here, Brian Jennings. Would you like to address any, anything at this point, or does, let us summarize it all?
Brian Jennings, building commissioner of Towne of Lunenburg, since you're asking the question. I mean, the memo pretty much outlines everything. The stormwater is a whole separate issue. There was extensively more grading on both lots than had been shown on the building permit application for the one lot, so that's why he's there. In terms of the timeline for that, that could be months. They still got to get the site stabilized completely and everything installed.
Do you know, or should I be asking the applicant, what, if we, if it was denied, what is the actual remedy? What would they have to do? Would they have to move that driveway down the road and make it?
So, they don't have to move it down the road. They actually did provide a plan showing the proper grading. That's the plan, second to last page of the packet that I supplied you guys with. This is the plan that they submitted in order to get the driveway permit and then filed for relief right after that.
Do we have a copy of that?
It was in the email, I said.
There's never been a driveway permit issued, right?
There was after they showed that they were going to fix it.
So, there's a permit issued for a driveway as shown on that plan, not as it exists, right?
Lisa just gave it to me. Thank you.
Right? I mean, there's a permit.
It's based on this driveway plan.
So, if, if that driveway was put in, a permit would be issued?
Permit was issued to install this driveway.
To install that driveway? Okay, I got you, all right.
It was already in when that, when you issued that, the driveway that's there now was?
This showed how they were going to fix the driveway.
Was already there, okay.
Does this, does, does he own the lot next door to that as well that's still vacant? What are you going to do with that?
That's part of what triggered the stormwater is the spillover of clearing onto the other lot as well.
That was just a curiosity question.
Is this showing a rock wall?
On the inside corner is a ripper up that's there now.
I'll give you guys a minute to look through. On April 20th, when you asked the applicant again, or whoever did, to provide the grades of the plan and driveway permit?
That was Casey Berlin game that asked that at that time.
What's that?
Casey, the previous building commissioner, he's the one that asked for the grading again. The way these permits set up in OpenGov, they sit and you can run reports to see what's still outstanding. I'm assuming that that's why, over the course of time, people kept jumping in and asking questions. FYI, you're missing this, you're missing that. Do it frequently still when I see something that's outstanding for a long period, you go in and you kind of give them a little goose that, hey, you're missing this.
Okay, because I was saying, he, he said he wasn't aware of the issues with it till November, but were you communicating with him direct or?
So, this was all Michael Blanchflower, who I'm not sure his relation with.
What their connection is.
The owner. He was the applicant and the one that all the communications were going to. He was basically acting as agent for Mr. Battles at that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the building commissioner?
No, but when I'm looking at this map, I go by there maybe 10 times a day. There's no house on the left going up the hill on Sunny Hill Road. There's another new house that's probably 10 years old on the right-hand side, and this is kind of reversed.
Their plan is showing a proposed second house on the other lot that doesn't exist right now. They, I believe they provided you with the stormwater permit plan that was submitted?
That's not there yet.
Oh, okay.
So, it's just this.
Complicating matters.
Okay.
Is that?
Thank you.
Not asking for a variance on the other one.
No, because I know that's equally as steep.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the building commissioner?
I just have one more, since I'm familiar with OpenGov. So, you're just reaching out to, like, somebody put that information in, and you're just, that's who you're communicating with because that's?
And typically, I believe on some of these communications, the applicant did respond back to various other departments with concern, so we know it was going through.
Yeah, okay, okay. But that, so that's, right. It's information that the applicant put in themselves, so whether it was a bad phone number is not.
Exactly.
It's not anything that you would have.
This gives you a way better paper trail than dropping off a paper application that disappears somewhere someday.
Yes, I, I agree, I love it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the public, if anyone would like to speak.
I'm Danny Proctor, I live at 1529 Mass Ave. I just wanted to say, Mr. Callahan, you asked a couple of questions about that driveway. Obviously, one of the big reasons why they want it flat down at the bottom is so they don't have water problems in the garage. And then up at the street, you want it as level as possible so that you don't come at the street on an angle where your visibility is hindered. So, I don't really know what happened in this project. I wasn't involved with any of the construction. I don't even know who did the work there, but I'm sure that that's what happened. He was coming off level, shortened the distance between two points. That's what created the steeper angle. That being said, I did a driveway in Lunenburg seven years ago, up on Lancaster Ave, where we had a very tall driveway. They made them put a snake in the driveway. It looked like Lombard Street in San Francisco to try to make the driveway longer, which way, would try to keep the slopes around that 12%. There were sections on that driveway that were not 12%, but they knew that going in. We tried to make it as gradual as possible. When I got done with the driveway, I called the fire chief. He drove up the driveway with his fire truck. Some of that driveway was 14% at least. So, to answer your question as far as the safety and what have you, I'm sure that fire trucks can get up and down that driveway, no problem. That is not really that steep, all things considered. I understand the bylaw in the Towne of Lunenburg, but I'm kind of assuming that's why that driveway ended up steeper in that one section, just because of the mathematics of it. Other towns, I'm doing a driveway in Ashby right now that's 17%. They have the same bylaw, they want 12%. Mike Savigno, the old building inspector from Lunenburg, is actually the building inspector in Ashby. I had a conversation with him. They felt it was better to have one steep section of 17% and then turn once to get up to the house lot. So, it was 17% and then it's like 9%, but it still averages that 12% because they feel that's the better way to get up a steep driveway. So, I don't know if that helps or not, but, so I am in favor of granting him what he's requesting, whatever Lisa read there for 20 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak from the public? See none. I'll bring it back to the board. Any more questions or conversation? You're in, go ahead.
I would just, I mean, I don't like that they were just kind of ignoring the communication and that it, you know, kept asking and getting no response. I would have liked to see somebody, like, on the print that I can't find anymore. I think it's like, you can see a number of 602 and kind of where that.
Yes.
So, when you're looking at that, the 602 is here, but then it's over here. So, I mean, I, I think as Mr. Proctor was just saying, that that, that pushes that back, which makes this grade more. And going down there today, I, I have a short bed F-150, and it was, I, I, I didn't like the look of it, and so I can see why I, as a homeowner, in my driveway, I wouldn't want to have that number right there, and I'd want it back here so that I get all four tires on a flat spot. But I just, I would have been nice if somebody kind of brought that to somebody's attention or, you know, attempted to make contact with the commissioner to kind of explain that. Because I'm assuming that was the intent, but again, I'm just assuming.
Okay. Anyone else?
The enforcement provisions of the bylaw say that the building commissioner can take appropriate action in the name of the town to prevent, correct, restrain, or abate violations of the bylaw. And then it also provides for a fine of $300 a day for every day that the violation has occurred. So, it occurs to me that we could impose a fine of some kind just for having thumbed his nose, basically, at the bylaw.
Okay.
I don't know if that's appropriate or not. You may not want to.
The building commissioner could.
Yeah.
But, but we as a board cannot.
Okay.
Is there anybody on Zoom on the public?
I do have a few people on Zoom. I don't see any hands raised. Let's see, this is me. I do not see any hands raised, but if anyone would like to say something and the hand raised is not coming up for me, just unmute yourself and say something.
Okay, so there's nobody that wants to speak from Zoom?
Do not see any hands raised or chat. Yep, everything looks clear.
Okay, thank you. All right, if we're done discussion, if nobody has anything else to say or add, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the variance because I don't think that it, I don't think that granting this variance would cause any substantial detriment to the public good and doesn't nullify or substantially derogate the intent or purpose of the bylaw.
Do I have a second?
I second.
You have a motion and a second. I will call for a vote. James?
Aye.
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 And I'm going to be a no, but it doesn't, you need four out of five, so the special permit is granted.
Variance is granted.
I do have to read a post. One more thing to read before you go. So, the special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances, and any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced, and that's not a problem. It's done. And with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate your time.
I still wonder who it was, who was asking for the grades?
I was going to say.
So, I think we use the same.
I used, for just a lot of towns, he was like the, we're still using.
So, tonight, there was a meeting scheduled at 7:30.
Yes, so we're going to stay on.
For 485 Lemons to Shirley Road. I received this correspondence from their attorney, Matthew Eckel of Fletcher and Tilton. Hi, Lisa, hope all is well with you. I am writing to you as our team would like to respectfully request a continuance of our appeal currently scheduled for February 14, 2024. If you could reach out to me at your convenience to discuss the feasibility of this scheduling and any materials you may need from me, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Matthew Eckel. I responded to Mr. Eckel. Is there a date, sir, that you would like to continue this hearing? If so, let me know at your earliest convenience and send me a signed memo stating such. He has requested May 8 at 7:00 PM for the continuance of this hearing.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that will be continued to May 8. You said? May 8 at 7:00. Okay, and that, and that, hold on one second. All right, go ahead, make.
I'll make a motion that we continue that meeting from night for, May 8. 485 Lemons to Shirley Road to May 8 at 7:00 PM.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was that date?
Aye.
May 8.
May 8.
If there's nothing else coming before the board, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, this hearing is over.